Okay. Any other changes or additions? Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've come to the portion of tonight's meeting for public comment. You may present your thoughts that on items that are not included on tonight's agenda. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or council, please leave your contact information on the sheet that's on the table right outside the door. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind or in your heart. Okay, seeing no one here for public comments, Ms. Mitchell, have you received any correspondence this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I have. Joshua Hunter Berkeley wrote in regarding concerns about Community One Baseball Field.
Thank you. All right, I will close public comments now. Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 40th Regular City Council Meeting on Monday, October 7, 2024, and City Council Special Meetings on Tuesday, October 1, 2024, and Monday, October 7, 2024. Two, motion number M9224, matter of approving the appointments to various boards and commissions. Three, motion number M9324, matter of approving the quote from CDWG to purchase the renewal of Google Workspace for three years at a cost of $26,374.50 annually. Funding for the purchase would come from account 101-228-760-000, computer software. Four, motion number M9424, matter of authorizing the interim city manager to execute a contract for senior home chore snow removal service with Yard Guys, 46036 Michigan Avenue, Suite 146, Catton, Michigan, 48188, for the 2024-25 winter season. This is a budgeted item that is paid for using community development block grant funds. Five, proclamation number P2624, matter proclaiming November 2024 is Native American Heritage Month. Six, proclamation number P2724, matter proclaiming November 2024 is Month's Health Awareness Month. And seven, proclamation number P2824, matter proclaiming October 28, 2024 is National First Responders Day.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Vilani. Any changes or corrections here? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions Presentations, matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I have asked Councilmember Black to read P2824.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, designating October 28, 2024 as National First Responders Day. Whereas first responders, including public works professionals, firefighters, police officers, emergency medical technicians, 911 operators, paramedics, and other emergency personnel stand on the front lines of our communities, selflessly serving and protecting the citizens of Berkeley in times of crisis. And whereas first responders respond swiftly and courageously to emergencies, often putting their own lives at risk to ensure the safety and well-being of others, whether in natural disasters, accidents, medical emergencies, or public health and safety threats. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Berkeley to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and other first responder efforts in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the sixth annual National First Responders Day, sponsored by bipartisan resolutions in the U.S. Senate and House. Now, therefore, the city of Berkeley proclaims Section 1, that the city council, on behalf of all local residents, designates October 28, 2024 as National First Responders Day. And Section 2, the city council invites the Berkeley community to join representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies, paying tribute to our public works first responders alongside law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics, emergency medical technicians, 911 operators, and other emergency personnel to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, October 21, 2024. Signed, Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, please read item number two on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M9524, matter of approving the city manager employment agreement and authorizing the mayor to execute the document.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve M9524?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani with support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Mr. Fornier.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, it's a pleasure to see everyone this evening. I appreciated the quick motion, and I'm happy to offer any additional insight or discussion points that I can. I know all of councils saw the city manager contract circa last week to review the terms and conditions. The contract that was presented from a substantive standpoint is modeled off our previous city managers. Structurally, we looked at some best practices from the International City Managers Association and took into account some modernization issues as it relates to employment agreements. Presented before you is a very standard city manager contract for a very quality candidate on a very competitive city manager market. So you're the third or fourth Oakland County community right now looking to secure a city manager. I'm sure you are well aware of that and apprised during the recruitment process and interview process. I know the interim city manager had a steady hand in negotiating the economic terms of the contract. But in short summary, the salary is $150,000 a year. Retirement benefit is based upon a percentage of salary, as well as a component piece 457 retirement account. There is a certain amount of paid time off, which is similar to the previous manager, as well as most other terms and conditions of employment will be governed by the merit system of human resources, which is our nonrepresented employment benefit program. As such, those benefits are similar in nature to those provided to the previous manager, and it would be the recommendation of our office that the council approve the contract as presented.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Geinzer, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I would just state that, you know, as the council might recall, at the last meeting, you authorized the mayor to proceed with negotiation with the support of myself and the labor attorney. We had a number of back-and-forth conversations with Ms. Van Black, who is still very excited to be here, anxious to get started. We've already had numerous conversations. She's ready to have more. This will ultimately help close one door and open the next door to a new chapter. Happy to discuss any questions. The mayor and I did have the opportunity to sit down with her, go through any final questions she had regarding the proposed document that was ultimately reviewed by the labor attorney and in front of you for consideration this evening.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council on this agenda item? Councilmember Baker.
Thank you. No questions per se. I want to thank and extend my appreciation to the team for working so diligently on this and so expeditiously to bring forth a very reasonable agreement for us to consider tonight. And again, kudos to all that applied for this process, and special congratulations to Crystal. Out of a very tough decision, she brings exceptional skills that I think are going to really help our city going forward. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Nate, our interim city manager, once again, for helping us through the summer and through transition time here upcoming. So incredibly pleased with the progress we've made, and I'll certainly be supporting this tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Whoa, sorry. Councilmember Black. Okay, Councilmember Henan.
I just think it would be fair to recognize that Ms. Van Black wished she could be here tonight, but had a prior engagement, so wasn't able to make it.
Thank you. Councilmember Black, did you have something?
No, you mentioned competitive market, and Nate, I know you've talked about it for people at home, and obviously we understand the times that we live in, who maybe don't understand that... Would you call this a, for lack of a better description, a garden variety contract for a candidate of this quality in a market that we're looking at across Oakland County, the state?
Yeah, I think statistically, the economic package is consistent with an entry-level manager making that step from assistant deputy city manager to city manager. When you look at other Oakland County communities in terms of where they're targeting with their experienced folks. The terms of the contract, like I said, are modeled after many agreements that you're going to find in southeastern Michigan. So the wage package based on the size of Berkeley and the consideration is very competitive for where we are in the marketplace, considering Royal Oak, Oak Park, Troy, Madison Heights have all gone through this process very recently.
And I would just add, as part of this process, I did also talk with the recruiter that you hired to help fill this position. And we talked about the economics as well, and he mentioned to me that this is exactly where he kind of figured it was going to end up, given the experience that Ms. Van Black has and is bringing to the table compared with others in this process, as well as what's happening, particularly in Oakland County and southeast Michigan in this current market.
Thank you. Okay, any public comment on this agenda item? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Fornier.
Thank you.
Mr. Geinzer. This has been a bit of a journey, but I think we ended up in the absolute best possible place that we can be. I'm very excited to welcome Ms. Van Black to Berkeley, and I know she's ready to hit the ground running. So, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M9524.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. M9524 has passed. Welcome, Ms. Van Black. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M9624, matter of approving a proposal from Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, HRC, for design engineering services as it relates to the Bacon Avenue water main and road reconstruction project in the amount of $282,421,072, as approved in the 2024-25 budget.
Is there a motion to approve M9624?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Black. Mr. Geinzer.
I'm going to ask Mr. Young to come up to the microphone and walk us through these next two items, please.
Perfect, thank you. Hello, Mr. Young.
Good evening. The proposal we have before you tonight is for engineering-related services for our next big water main project. Next project we're looking at is Bacon from 12 Mile to 11 Mile. So that's a big project. It's bigger than we normally bite off. We did take a little hiatus this year, so we're hoping to do some catch-up work. Project's still going to be broken down into two phases. In case bids come back, we can separate it out, bite it off over two years, and still be able to get it done. Similar to other projects, it's total road reconstruction. Whole road's going to be gone. Water main will be replaced. New driveway approaches, new sidewalk. Some minor stormwater improvements, just in the depth of the curb and retain water with restricted covers.
Sure.
Trees, we'll try and save all the trees we can. There's a lot of planning and prep work that goes into it, so we want to... This is kind of early start, so we would do the prep work now, go out to bid in the fall, but project wouldn't start until 26, the spring of '26.
Oh, okay.
It is at large, and we're talking almost six and a half million dollars to do the... And that's just the estimate. So it may come a little higher. So it'll cover, with this assistance, its third-party utility coordination, survey, a lot of public engagement efforts. You know, I know some of our projects, we kind of got behind the tail end when we got the public involved. We want to get out in front of it.
I like that. I like that spirit and focus on this project. Thank you.
President should expect to see our camera truck out checking sewers ahead of time. So we always try and get out ahead of time. That's part of the leeway, too. We want to be out, give them some time. If they have a bad sewer, we want to replace it before the road is put back, not after. So ones that are seriously deficient, we're going to send you a letter saying, hey, you've got to fix your sewer. But ones that are iffy, we're going to send them a letter saying, hey, you really should check it, along with notices, general notifications to everybody to have it checked on their own. Important thing to note is we are working on the next five to seven years that was previously approved by council of projects. This is the immediate ones, but you're going to see another five to seven year on the capital improvement plan coming soon.
Any questions from Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, just elaborating on the sewer notifications. If someone is on that borderline and maybe needs work, it's going to be significantly cheaper for them because they're not going to have to pay for repairing a brand-new road if they wait until... If they do it before, if they do it after, it's going to be considerably more.
Yeah, correct. With our current policy, if you're taking a section of the road for, say, a sewer repair, if it's halfway across, if you're on the short side, it's $2,500. If you're on the long side, it's an additional $5,000. Plus, you have the, you know, the maintenance and the patching. We would... You do the initial patching, and we would hold on to it from there. We wouldn't put that material back until the road is done. So it's substantial savings for the resident to do it ahead of time.
Councilmember Black.
So how would that work with people that have the Service Line Warranties of America policies? That sewer line warranty, would that... If there is a need, is that something that they can file a claim on?
It is a third-party insurance. I mean, so that would be up to the resident to look at it. If we sent them a notice and they had a policy in place, that would be between them and service line warranties, but I would... Or whoever, whatever insurance company they have. So it's definitely something I would lean on, but, you know, I can't speak for the third party.
A lot of that's only for backup, though, too. It's not necessarily going to be for the existing condition of the line.
See, I thought it was for... They had offered three different...
Oh, so there's higher tiers?
Yes.
And there's now, I think it's not being offered through the city of Berkeley via service line warranties. You can call directly yourself and get that coverage.
Yeah, there's some confusion. They told the city of Berkeley they're no longer offering it. And... But then, some people get cancellations, some get renewals. It's... I haven't been able to figure it out.
I think it depends on how they originally signed up. There's service line warranties. There was two different policies. Service line warrants, they were bought by a third party. We have been in discussions with them because I think that's a very important piece for the community to have.
Sure.
And I think we'll have something pretty soon where they'll be offering it. I'm hopeful. It's worth heading, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sean, certainly don't need an answer tonight or anything like that, but I'd look forward to an analysis of green stormwater infrastructure opportunities as we do some of these larger projects. You know, I know we've got limited right-of-way opportunities to be able to do this, but I'd like that to be part of the consideration as we move forward with some of these larger projects.
And that, it always is.
Okay.
It's always in our mind, how do we improve our stormwater needs? I mean, Bacon is pretty tight.
Yeah.
So we're going to retain more water on the road. There's not a whole lot of options there. There is the park down a little further. But getting that water from there to the park, it's all gravity-fed, so you're only going to pick up that little bit of the water, that whole span. Unfortunately, with the limited right-of-way we have, there's not a lot of options there. Boulevard Street or something like that would have much more options, but, you know, what we have there, it's pretty tight.
Well, I appreciate you guys doing the consideration as part of the project. Thank you.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, we good, council?
We did have one more.
Sure.
And again, this might be premature because we haven't even begun a lot of the engineering and things yet. In some of the road reconstruction projects we've done in the past, we were able to retain parking on both sides of the street. Other initiatives, we've needed to make decisions to have parking on just one side of the street where there used to be two. Do we have any inclination, or is that yet to be determined? Or will it depend on which block you're on or where you are between 12 and 11?
If my memory is right, there's parking on both sides of the street on Bacon currently. I don't see that changing. I'm not 100% sure because we're pretty early, but I see it staying pretty much the same as what it is now. One thing I forgot to mention would be the parking along Oxford Park. That would be removed and replaced. It would... To try and match that grade with the existing parking lot in the road, it's just not going to work. So that would be part of the project as well. So there will be some impacts to the splash pit area on Oxford Park as well. But that would be spring of '26.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
Okay, good. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M9624.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M9724, matter of approving the proposal from Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, HRC, for assistance with items related to the Eagle Technical Managerial and Financial TMF Grant in the amount of $242,000.
Is there a motion to approve M9724?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Geinzer.
Again, I'm going to have Sean walking through this.
So as you may know, we received a grant from Eagle in the amount of $570,900 to further investigate our lead service lines. Our CDSMI, which is a complete distribution system inventory, that was due October 16. We went through that process where we had to verify 362 homes, which was 700 and change as far as actual physical excavations. Unfortunately, it told us kind of what we already knew, that we had roughly 5,700 houses that had a potential for lead services. So this grant is to help us try and narrow those down, see exactly what we have. It'll allow them... Part of the project would be allow residents to self-report. There'd be a portal, online portal. They can self-report their materials. We would do additional physical verifications, and that would be rolled into future capital improvement projects. We kind of changed, backing up to the Bacon, kind of changed criterias a little bit with the prevalence of lead. So now it's road condition, water main condition, the amount of lead services on that stretch. If I got a lot of lead services on that stretch, it doesn't make sense to dig them all up individually and then come back later and do a main project. Let's hit those first and try and accomplish both goals with the same...
Sir.
So this grant would basically... Or this proposal would be for engineering assistance. It would be managing the portal for us. Notifications to residents, they would handle all the physical notifications. Grant... As far as the grant progress, they would do that for us as well.
So they'll be managing the grant?
They'll be managing the grant all together.
Okay.
They will also help us research other funding opportunities from the results that we get.
Great.
They'll assist us with the packets we've required. Anybody that we know has lead... Like, we have 5,700 packets we have to send out now. You have a lead service, here's the dangers of lead. Or you have a potentially lead service. Ones we don't know, we have to consider as potentially lead. They will send those out. Here's the dangers of lead. Here's what you need to protect yourself. And also, here's how you get on the list for lead replacement. We looked through the platform already. And then they'll also help us make recommendations, as I said, about... For future capital projects.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Henan?
Based on the... Sorry, I didn't ask this before, and it's numbers, so you may not have it. Do we have an estimate on, based on our current work, how many... Say there's 100 with suspected lead. Have we... How many have we found actually have lead when we go to look?
And I should be careful with this, but what I've... About 30% of what I think is what we presume is lead is that's what we've been finding is actually lead. But that number's... That's just off the cuff. You know, I wouldn't take that one to the bank.
Not holding you to it, yeah.
Right now, officially, we have 5,700 that could be lead.
Councilmember Black.
Sean, people hear lead, and they think Flint.
Yes.
For the average person at home, could you just explain very simply what you're talking about so that we can keep things... Expectations simple and perceptions calm.
So there's a lot of lead service lines. Lead was predominant material in the 20s and early 30s. It's been... You know, we test for lead, and we test our water yearly. And our tests are actually trending down. The treatment that they put in the water, they put a phosphate in the water to coat the lead to keep that lead material out of our drinking water. And our numbers have been trending down. Recently, Great Lakes water, they're actually increasing that number a little higher to bring that lead number down even further. Now with Flint, and you hear probably out of Flint, they changed water supplies. They went from the Great Lakes to the Flint River, changed the treatment, did the treatment on their own. I can't elaborate more, but I... Somewhere, they missed a step. The water is very acidic. It stripped that phosphate off, and then it started stripping the lead and putting it into the drinking water. Caused a major outcry. There's hot spots all over where they have an issue, and typically, it is not in the Great Lakes water. It's very rare we have something in the Great Lakes water district that's widespread like that. Drinking water is safe. We test for it. We've been testing fine. But any chance we get the lead out is a good thing. Let's eliminate the hazard.
So when people hear from you, it's not because they have lead in their water?
No, it's because they have a lead service line. Not that you have lead in your water. You have lead, a lead service line. There's a potential hazard there. Let's get rid of the potential hazard. Water's safe to drink. I drink the same water. I drink Berkeley water.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah. So the state gave us 20 years to replace, and we're a few years in. And the EPA has just come down with a rule that we have to replace within 10 years. So how is that impacting us? Or do we know yet? I know that's pretty recent.
I'm really hoping they have some money to go along with that rule. Because I... 10 years, it's an unrealistic goal. I mean, honestly, for small communities such as us without funding, it's an unrealistic goal.
They had some number of billions for it, but it was not going to be enough for the nation.
And this is one of those unfunded mandates. You know, people ask like, well, what is an unfunded mandate? This is a really good example of one that, you know, we're required to do it, but we don't have the funds. And while there are grants, and I know we apply for things, and we try and, you know, utilize all those things, we're still in a moment of, we have to comply, and there isn't the money to make that happen. Hopefully, we do not have to do it in the 10 years. Hopefully, you know, we'll get more time to do that, so...
Yeah, and I think it's... Hate to say it's going to be a sliding scale. My gut tells me as long as everybody's testing good, I think. My gut tells me as long as everybody's testing good, I think. 10 years is just, without the funding, I don't see how it's going to happen.
Any other questions? Any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-9724.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M-9724 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M-9824. Matter of approving temporary HR services.
Is there a motion to approve M-9824?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henon with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Geinzer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. At the prior meeting, you approved the hiring of a new HR director position. That is a process we are starting. In fact, I talked with your incoming city manager recently, and we have a game plan and a timeline that we're going to be working on filling that position. However, in the meantime, I need help. We need help to get some processes cleaned up, get our employees taken care of. Thankfully, it's an all-hands-on-deck, everybody's stepping up to try to help work through some of these issues. I have executed a scope of work with Gallagher, who knows our community. They have done an HR assessment here. They know where some of the needs are, they know a number of our providers, they know a number of our employees. But I just want to be forward and transparent with council. I want to come to you now to ask for you to review this scope, because I expect that I am going to go through my spending authority pretty quickly. I don't anticipate, I anticipate there's a chance I'm going to run out of my spending authority before our next meeting. And I don't want to come to you then after I've already done this for a month and then say, hey, will you please approve this? Charlene has already been helping to onboard Gallagher. There are a number of systems we need to get them signed up on so that we can get in and get people signed up and serviced appropriately. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, this is temporary until we get a new HR professional onboard and on-boarded. And I would also note, any potential costs associated with this. We've got two vacancies in finance, and again, you approved this recently. That's going to be two, at least maybe three months to fill that. So there are cost savings that will go to offset any investment that we make in this temporary support.
Well, I really like a good process cleanup, and I appreciate you being proactive and coming to us with this item. There would be nothing worse than we're moving right along, and we have things going, and all of a sudden we have to stop because there isn't. So I appreciate all of that. Any questions, Councilmember Vilani?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Manager Geinzer, I think all of council understands and appreciates the need for a full-time HR person. But since we are going to look into temporary support for anybody watching at home, because there was some question within the community as to why we would not just permanently use temporary support, if that's a thing, it sounds like an oxymoron. Can you explain the benefits of, and the purpose of the short-term support that we're getting, and why we wouldn't maybe want to consider that for long-term?
Sure. So first and foremost is cost. Any contracted service, you're going to pay more upfront. There's overhead, there's other people that you're supporting aside from just the one person that's helping us out here. That's one piece of it. But from a bigger picture standpoint, it's really about our employees. I mean, that's first and foremost, that there is a person that they can come to when there is a need, whether it's a benefit issue, whether it's a personnel matter, whether it's a relational issue with another employee, whether it's getting them connected with EAP services to help make sure that they're successful and working through whatever issues. It's a critical piece to an organization of the size and scope of the city of Berkeley. We rely on, we do a lot of hiring. And that's not because we get a lot of vacancies, it's just processes, particularly, they left, particularly as it, when it comes to public safety. I mean, there is a lot that we have to go through in order to recruit, retain. We have a number of older employees that are nearing retirement, that's all going to lead to transition. As we are finding, and we don't have a solid succession plan for a lot of these positions, and that's in part why we're looking for this temporary service. There's a lot of gaps that we're looking to fill with that role so that we have continuity of service as the organization continues to evolve. And again, first and foremost, supporting our employees, the people that are here every day, trying to deliver the best service possible to our community. That's the quick summary. I mean, we can get into more nuanced stuff, but hopefully that helps.
It does, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson?
Were there other agencies contacted, or do you?
No, I didn't, for a couple of different reasons. One is professional service, which means we don't have to go out to bid, but that doesn't mean that's why we don't go out to price. Gallagher knows our organization, they know our systems, well, not our systems, but they know our benefits. And quite honestly, I don't have time to waste. I mean, we're dealing with a number of matters right now. I just don't have time to waste. I mean, whatever few dollars we might save, I'm doing a disservice to the organization by doing that. And I can understand if there might be folks that might want to suggest that there might be other matters out there in the community or whatever. But my first, number-one priority is to do what's right for this organization, do what's right for our employees, and exped, and doing this expeditiously is the right move with where we're at right now.
Councilmember Henon?
First of all, just add on to that, you know, Gallagher has done a comprehensive assessment of our HR needs. So they already know, would have a leg up on anyone else that would be coming in. And just to clarify one point, the fact that you're already onboarding them before you came with this approval tonight, it's, that's well within your authority and that we've granted you in your spending allowance.
100%. I just did not want to get to the point where I run out of my authority and then we just have to stop. I don't know that we will have everything addressed by then. I don't know, and I really don't want to see us go backwards with our staff and with our systems when we're trying to recruit and onboard somebody to take us further into the 2020s. So we did what we had to do to get things rolling, but ultimately, for this and for us to be successful, I need your support on this temporary basis so that we can do what we need to do.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? Okay. Public comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-9824.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
No.
Vilani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M-9824 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number six on tonight's regular agenda.
Discussion, matter of discussing the boards and commissions' policy and procedures.
Okay, Mr. Geinzer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. While Ms. Stevens comes up to the microphone, this is just a, we thought we had a relatively light agenda. We wanted to start one more conversation with you all, particularly as we get closer to the end of the calendar year. As we've been working through administering the city council's procedures as it relates to boards and commission appointments, we're coming across some matters that could use some optimization, we'll say. And so we wanted to kick that off tonight and maybe talk about how we want to move forward to update. Ultimately, this is one of your procedures. So with that, Charlena?
Yes, hi. So for boards and commissions, just to give a little bit of background, it's been in the city manager's office for my tenure while I've been here, so it's been here for a year and a half. Prior, it was in the clerk's office, and then it was also in city manager's office. So it did a lot of moving around. There has been a lot of changes that's happened, and I've been instituting a lot of these things, and so has other staff. So a lot of these are just staff recommendations of things that we've seen. So some of the current challenges, I would just start off by saying, let me start off by explaining the procedure of boards and commissions, just so it doesn't just sound a little halfway done. So with boards and commissions, when a person is interested in any board or commission, they apply on our website. The application comes to the board's email. I am one of the people who it comes to. I review it, and then I give it to that chair of that board. The chair of the board then has conversations with their board. They come back to me with the recommendations of whoever applied, whether it be one person or it be five or six people. We usually do this in a massive way. It starts July 1, we pretty much take those applications all the way until June. But we also have a rolling basis for a lot of our boards and commissions. When I receive it, I, back from the board, I then give it to our city manager, who then presents it to you guys, who are the council. You all let me know, and then that's when we have it on the council agenda. So all of that is, that is pretty much what the process looks like. And so a lot of times, staff is a part of that process. So one of the recommendations is just that staff will help support the vetting process, because a lot of us do work in the community, as well as we do have a lot of our staff who are residents as well. So we pretty much know a lot of our board or commission members as well. Also, we had a couple of challenges regarding resignations. And also, we want to consolidate a lot of the groups. So a lot of things are very similar to each other, and we want to make things more productive and make sure we are better serving our community by possibly merging some boards and commissions that have similar missions and goals. So then we're able to accomplish more things, because we have more people, more hands-on deck for that, as well as the purchase policy when it comes to boards and commissions. That's something that doesn't happen as often, but is a couple of questions that I have been receiving, as well as other staff members, that we follow a procedure, but we want to make sure that we have this written down. And so if anything happens, it's always there, and not just something that we always typically do. And so with the current process, I explained that earlier. But some of the current process that is documented on paper is not entirely the process that we do in person, because there has been a lot of changes to different procedures that we have here, as well as like submissions to be able to have things on the agenda for days like today. So I want to make sure, and I just meet other staff members, want to make sure that we properly are writing this down and making sure this is documented, and we have it completed in both places, as well as some of these are some of the expectations that we, like, that we have already, and making sure, A, that our boards are served as best, so people who are being appointed to these boards are actually serving them, and people who want to be on these boards actually have room for themselves, because some of our boards do have capacity. So we wanted to make sure that all our appointees, as well as people who are applying, all have an equal opportunity to be able to join our boards or commissions. So a lot of our recommendations that we wanted to have conversations about revolve that as well. And so one of the things that we did consider, and we did have a great conversation about it, was create an ad hoc committee so that we can get a survey from our residents, as well as a survey from people in our boards and commissions, because I would love to hear their voices as well. I tried to make sure we emphasize that, that we are here to hear you, and you are here to hear us. So we work together as a team, as well as hearing you guys' feedback as well. So my consider, my ask is the consideration of an ad hoc committee with council members who will allow us to have that conversation, because this is a process that is very meticulous, that I want to make sure as we are putting everything through for our residents and our board members that we are doing right by them, as well as making sure everything is documented correctly and making sure we flesh out our policies. And I want to see if I hear any feedback as well.
Thank you. Feedback from council, Councilmember Patterson?
Having served on two boards and commissions before this position, I'll join your ad hoc committee, I think it's worth. Some of the things, just the library board recently, we did their bylaws in the last couple of years.
Yes.
Just some of that scope for the boards isn't always clear, or some of those, but the intent of the board is.
Yes.
I'd love to help, however it may be.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, this is great. I appreciate the time and effort that you've put together to not only bring this before us, but the, what awaits in terms of working with the ad hoc committee and the residents and the volunteers. That's fantastic, that's super cool. To my colleague's point about the scope, this will be an important part of the scope of the ad hoc committee, because several of these are chartered in different ways, with a lowercase c. You know, like Historical Committee is actually in our city's charter. DDA has its own whole funding mechanism and process for this and that. So it'll be neat to see the ways in which we have commonality, and then, of course, seasoned to taste. Like, you know, some things will be a little different because it's structured that way. Now, that's a separate conversation if we want to restructure it so that they're more consistent. Again, probably with the exception of DDA because of the TIF funding and all that kind of stuff. But that's, I think that's going to be a great potential area. Two other thoughts, and it may have been in here, or maybe it's part of the additional thinking, is kind of like an onboarding packet, or a way to like say, hey, welcome to volunteering at Berkeley. You know, thank you for raising your hand, now here's what you signed up for, you know, kind of a thing. Where I believe at the moment, it's, you know, best effort by each of the chairs and the liaisons to try to help them come up to speed, say, here's what this is all about, here's where you look for information, you know, Robert's rules, to the extent to which those are used within each of the committees. So something like that would be really helpful, I'm sure. And then, in one of your slides, you had mentioned challenges with regards to resignations. I was curious a little bit about that, and also if this touches on absenteeism. So I know in some of the committees, we have, like, so liaison Historical, we've had several well-intentioned residents who signed up within the best of intentions to participate. And then five, six, seven months go by, and they don't attend, but yet they're an official member, so they affect quorum. And sometimes we've had meetings where we weren't able to conduct business because a well-intentioned person who, you know, it seems as though either their interests or their schedules won't permit them to participate, deter the committee from making any formal progress in terms of voting on things. So any thoughts, I'd love to hear any initial thoughts you have on resignations, and then also, please also consider the notion of absenteeism, like what the threshold is. Is it three meetings in a row, or is it five, or is it a year? You know, just to have some, back to the notion of consistency, I think could be really cool. Any thoughts on the resignations part?
Yes. So for resignations, I, so far, we've talked about it a little bit, more having like a written resignation policy, so we have things in print and things like that, and also putting some rules around resignations, some things that we wanted to make sure we had a conversation about. But I wanted to make sure I had a conversation with everyone to see what everyone's thoughts were, because I am saying it from a person who's the implementer. So that's why my, I might say like, okay, if I don't see you in this, this time, then this might be time for this person to resign. And when it comes to absenteeism, I would say that I have talked to a couple chairs of a couple boards, and that has come up multiple times, and that's something that we did want to explore. So far, I believe it is four absences before you are dismissed from that board. Each board also in that kind of like charter with the lowercase c we were talking about earlier. And some of those, those rules are spilt out in that, but we really want to make sure we flesh those out and make sure, while we understand people are well-intentioned, we also want to make sure we're serving the public, as well as serving the board to the best of our abilities. So I don't want to disadvantage anyone by not having quorum and getting things done and trying to make our community better. So I would like to hear a lot more about like what other people are thinking, because I know each board is different, they have different meeting schedules. So four might not be plausible for some boards who may need three times a year or four times a year, while other boards may need a little bit more than that. So I did want to make sure we at least acknowledge that as well, if that answered your question.
That's fantastic, I really appreciate your thought process on that, and look forward to hearing how this progresses. And, you know, put me somewhere on the list for this. I know ad hocs are usually, what, three members from council? So I defer to the mayor and the process that you guys come up with in terms of staff in this. But, you know, in whatever way I can help, I'd certainly be glad to give you, you know, one and a half cents after taxes.
Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, I'll build on a, first I'll build on a couple of things that have been said. The Planning Commission and ZBA are two other boards that, you know, there are state legal requirements on what they must do. So we can't, so we have a say in how we appoint, but there's also legal requirements that we can't change. So far as attendance, you know, I have looked at the attendance ordinance that we do have, and one of the problems is that absences can be excused. And what that's turned into is people email, if someone's emailed in for whatever the reason, you know, I just don't feel like coming tonight, but they emailed, that becomes an excused absence. So I'm going to suggest that we just, because no one on the board wants to be the bad guy, so. So let's be the bad guy and just say, if you don't, if you're not showing up, you know, you can't do the work, whether the reason's good, bad, if you're not there, like, we have our own minimum attendance requirements in the charter. So, similar to that. And, um, I've played a lot around with, we do have some of the boards, like the, uh, Board of Review, they only meet twice a year, I think.
Yes, they do.
And, uh, so yeah, four isn't practical for them. So do you set it at a percentage, uh, you know, if you miss a percentage of the meetings? And I played around with a lot of numbers on a big spreadsheet, came up with 25%. It seemed like a good place, but, uh, even with the Board of Review, with only two meetings a year, you miss one, you're out and there could be good reason to be out. So it might be, if you meet six or more times a year, you're this formula. If you meet less than six, it's this other formula. That gets tricky because the ZBA only meets when there's cases. So some years they may only have, they may have less than six meetings. So that gets strange. You know, part of what I've seen is we need to build a, figure out how to build a pipeline of getting quality people applying to the boards. It's not that, uh, the people that are there aren't quality, it's that, you know, we have recruiting problems sometimes and there are vacancies. I'll shout out, there's a ZBA alternate position we're looking to fill now. And, and I know some of you at home watch the ZBA meetings and the council meetings, so, you know, be sure to apply. You evidently have an interest if you're watching a ZBA meeting. You know, and then how do we properly vet them? You know, I've always struggled with that. It's, it's, uh, I'm not good at interviewing, so I don't have a good sense of, are they one of the people ready to come to work or are they just looking to, uh, get this to put on their resume? And then we do have the absenteeism with some people never show up, but get to put it on their resume that they're on the board, and I think, um, that's sometimes the motivation. And then reappointment right now is kind of automatic. If you've been on the board, we just reappoint. I think we should consider, well, have them reapply and have them say what they've been doing. They're not just, not that they're not just checking into the meeting and showing up, but don't really participate, don't really contribute anything. What have you contributed? And, um, as part of that annual review, uh, we, you know, decide if we want to continue or not with that relationship. I think a failure we have had as a council is just giving clear direction to the committees. You know, we don't, we don't utilize them, uh, we don't delegate tasks, you know, we, we haven't really asked them to do anything that's within their purview and they're there, you know, and they're, uh, the committee members I've talked to are eager to hear for, you know, and want what, to know what we want to do. So, uh, we need to, I think, do a better job of remembering we have that asset that's eager to work and, uh, and to use them.
Yeah.
So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also just like, is it okay if I respond back? Oh, yeah, okay. So just like you said, I did try a little experiment the last, um, uh, July 1 reappointment date where I asked everyone on the board, I tried to, are you okay with reapplying? Like, I would also want to stop burnout too of people always just being a person who's saying yes, and I wanted to make sure I asked. Um, I did get a lot of people who say yes and a lot of people who said maybe they needed a break. So it, that you are correct when it comes to that, that did help a lot too.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Okay, any further thoughts, Mr. Pankar?
Um, I know I said there'd be no motion. We didn't have a recommended motion. I mean, it's up to you. If we want to move forward with an ad hoc now, we can continue to pull together some best practices and be ready for an ad hoc, uh, maybe to be appointed at, I think we only have one meeting in November though. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is if there's going to be updates, let's get them done before the next, uh, annual, uh, process because that's when most of the work happens.
Well, you have two people that, um, expressed interest in the ad hoc, so I would say strike while the iron's hot and you can always add the third, right? I mean, they can.
I do really.
Oh, and Mayor Protem Gavin, done.
Easy cheesy.
So who would like to formulate a motion to that effect? Nate, do you have, um, verbiage that you would like us to use for?
Uh, someone to move to, uh, form the boards and commissions, city council ad hoc to review, uh, the city council's policies and procedures as it relates to board and commission appointments and structure.
Perfect.
So moved.
Okay. Baker and Patterson, you have that? Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
I think we need to name who's going to be on it too.
Oh, sure. Mayor Protem Gavin, council member Patterson, council member Baker.
Do we need to formally nominate? I nominate, uh, council member Henin, Mayor Protem Gavin, and council member Patterson. Oh, sorry. Henin. Protem Gavin and Patterson.
It's Baker.
Like circle the earth, it's right there. It's right there.
Yes, it's the candy corn, it's throwing me off.
Baker Gavin Patterson. And do we need a support of that or we all vote now?
We're, we're good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Didn't think so. Okay. Communications, Ms. Mitchell, who goes first?
Um, Mayor Protem Gavin.
All right.
All right. Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Keep it very short tonight. Uh, Parks and Rec Advisor Board will meet December 12th at 7:00 PM at the Community Center and the Library Board will meet at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, uh, the 20th, and that's all I have.
Great. Council member Valani.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the Berkeley Area Chamber, the State of Cities and Best of Berkeley is this Wednesday at the American Legion from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. Tickets must be purchased in advance, they are $30. Uh, and big congratulations to our Business Person of the Year, Katie Forte of June and December, and also our Business of the Year, Gabrielle Mikowski Realty. Uh, both of those will be honored at the celebration on Wednesday, so be there and support our wonderful community members. The Environmental Advisory Committee has no updates, their last meeting was canceled due to a lack of quorum. The next meeting will be on November 21st. And then just lastly, looking forward to seeing everyone at the Boukley events this weekend. Uh, come visit council member Black and I at the Monster Mash in the game area.
Council member Patterson.
Thank you. Uh, tomorrow, the planning commission will meet at 7:00 PM here, uh, where they'll be beginning or finishing, kind of reviewing the final, uh, draft of the zoning rewrite. So they've been working on that quite a while, so they're trying to finish that. And then on Wednesday this week, the beautification committee will meet, uh, in public safety, second floor at 6:30. Um, and then on Sunday, the 27th, at 9:00 AM, um, we, the beautification committee, uh, will be meeting at Friends Park on Harvard, um, to help with all cleanup. If anybody wants to come, bring your shovel, um, and wear gloves, like gloves. Um, and then again, as we wrap up our month, um, from Mayor Dean for our food pantry here, our Berkeley Cares, um, my students and I were able to donate about 650 non-perishables and feminine hygiene products to our food pantry. Uh, we made that huge haul on Friday. It's very hot in that pantry when you're unloading hand goods, but it's for a great cause, so we helped to sort those and restock some of them shelves. Um, the students heard about that at the pancake breakfast that we did, um, and they jumped into action. So, um, great job to my students, um, at Madonna University School of Nursing. And, um, so we wrapped up our month, so.
Thank you. Council member Black.
Ma'am, community, uh, Committee for Technology and Engagement is currently trying to figure out our next meeting, which hopefully will, uh, be at the end of this month or into early November. And we continue to, um, try to right-size ourselves and establish a very firm mission statement. That's all I have.
Good. Council member Henin.
Yes, uh, the tree board will meet on Monday, October 21st. And then at the zoning board of appeals, they heard three cases. Two are essentially, uh, identical cases for larger signs for the two new multi-office tenant buildings that are on Greenfield, and both of those were approved. And then the third was for a parking variance, uh, for the former tattoo shop on Coolidge, and that passed paving the way for a photography studio. So the ZBA, as I mentioned before, we're still looking for one more alternate, uh, and there'll be no cases to be heard in November. And then finally, I've put out my annual Halloween map for people to put down their decorations or what treats you're going to be giving out at Halloween, you know, for your home or business. And, uh, if you want to contribute to that, uh, you can do it at bit.ly-berkley-halle- slash BerkeleyHalloween2024. Thank you.
Say it again.
Bit.ly slash BerkeleyHalloween2024, all one word.
Thank you. Council member Baker.
Hey, that's me, thank you. Uh, the historical committee, uh, also didn't meet, uh, due to lack of quor- uh, quorum, but their next meeting is, uh, Tuesday, November 12th at 7 o'clock in the evening. Please visit the museum during the, uh, the trick or treat stroll coming up on Saturday the 26th. Uh, they will be there and they'll be happy to answer questions and provide you with all sorts of insights into our city's great history and the, and if you can't wait, you can, uh, visit them online at BerkeleyHistory.com. Uh, our downtown development authority, DDA, um, met on Wednesday the 9th. Uh, they discussed options for refreshing the downtown strategic plan, which was last documented from, uh, 2017 to 2022. Uh, they've been operating under the auspices of that plan since and it's, remains directionally correct. And so the intent going forward would be to revisit and revise some of the specific intentions and actions for the next, uh, planning cycle, again, uh, affirming the, the goals that are stated, uh, there. I'd like to ask us to please keep our, uh, director of, uh, DDA, Mike McGinnis and his family in mind, in mind here. Uh, they've had two family losses within the last couple of weeks. Uh, and so, you know, any loss is a tough loss, but to have two of them kind of back-to-back like this is, is a lot. So at the extent to which you're able to, to, uh, share your love, uh, with them as, as I do and, uh, and keep them in your thoughts. Uh, and, uh, please, you know, if you do see him during the, uh, the festivities coming up this weekend for Boukley, uh, please, uh, you know, um, thank him again for all that he does, especially in these challenging times. Uh, and, uh, I'd like to welcome Anna Grace to the DDA. Uh, she was one of the, um, uh, candidates that applied and went through the process within the DDA, uh, to become a new board member. She's an at-large member and I'd like to yield, if you'd like to say anything, um, uh, or not. I know you had a speech and a PowerPoint prepared.
Yeah, I had a whole PowerPoint, but, you know, technical difficulties, so it's okay. Um, yeah, I just want to say I'm really happy to be part of the DDA board. Um, thank you all for doing what you do for the city. I moved here about three years ago, I bought my first house here and the community has been very welcoming and everything that the DDA has been doing in the city is just astounding. And I just want to keep telling people to come to Berkeley, to go shopping or go to the restaurant. So as soon as a board, uh, position opened up, I applied right away. So thank you for doing all of the things that we do here. It's really just an incredible city, so happy to be part of it. Thanks.
Thank you and welcome aboard. And, uh, of course, as Boukley comes up here, please, uh, keep an eye on downtownberkeley.com, uh, for details on the specifics. We have the trick or treat stroll from this Saturday from, uh, let's see, that's from 12 to 3 and then the Monster Mash overlaps from 12 to 5 on Coolidge, so that'll be fantastic. And finally, it was Stephen Colbert who once said, "Halloween is right around the corner." You can tell because all the stores are stocked up for Christmas. And, uh, I believe this is our last council before, um, before Halloween, so please be safe out there. Uh, parents, you know, bring appropriate flashlights and, and safety, uh, stuff with you all. Keep an eye on your kids. Uh, homeowners, please, uh, be responsible with, um, what you offer and how, uh, the conditions with which, uh, so that it's a safe approach for the kids coming up to your house. Uh, and have a great, safe time and, uh, and, uh, hope to see you out at the Monster Mash. And please hug somebody along the way too. Uh, if you know them, it's probably best, you know. I was thinking more like from family members or things, but, you know, if somebody's open to a random hug, I guess it's all right, but just check first. Yeah. It's important. All of that.
Okay. Right now I am. Mr. Pankar.
Uh, yes, two items. Uh, first, on a personal note, I'll pick up on the, on the Halloween stuff. Um, you know, it's a lot of times this time of year, we get caught up in all the Halloween festivities and, um, I think it's important for folks that are going to give out, uh, treats and things like that to remember that there are a lot of kids out there that cannot have what you have out at the doorstep. Being a father of a, of a son that has very severe, uh, food allergies, I just want to give a shout out to the Teal Pumpkin Project. Uh, Teal Pumpkin is, uh, an effort to, uh, indicate that your home offers allergy-friendly, uh, treat options, whether that is, um, uh, candies that are free of the major allergens or, um, you'll see more places are, uh, offering like little toys and you'd be amazed at like how many people go for those versus the candy. So I just want to do a shout out for that, it's an important thing for our family. Uh, and then last but not least, it's official. You have a new city manager. Congratulations. Um, and I'm not being facetious, I just want to walk council through a little bit of what you can expect. As we've talked about, Crystal's super excited to get started. Uh, her official first day is December 2nd, uh, but quite honestly, she has wasted no time, nor have I wasted any time. I have been and I will continue to include Crystal in any major decision that I do moving forward from the, the night that you appointed her. That included items on this agenda, including the HR temporary services. We've talked about that extensively as a need, um, which she was in agreement on. That's going to be a process that's going to continue going forward. Anything that I need to bring forward that could have an impact on her, um, onboarding or her ability to do her job or to make sure that she has the resources and the team to have the resources to be successful, she will be a part of that conversation. I say her, I, I said her official date was December 2nd, she's already started, we've got her for two meetings this week already. Uh, we've already booked her for a staff retreat, we've already booked her for a council retreat after she's started. Um, so she will be an active part of this team going forward. If you have any questions as we go through the transition process, I mean, absolutely do not hesitate to reach out. Uh, we're going to get her set up with her, uh, city email here shortly, so I can start copying her on some things. Not that she should be checking that, Crystal, which I know you're probably watching right now. It's just to make it easier for you to find information. And, uh, again, congratulations and, um, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Krist.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have no legal report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Well, um, I would just like to give a shout out to PSO Andrew Boring. He's been selected as the Royal Oak Optimist Club 2024 Berkeley Public Safety Officer of the Year as part of their recognition of community members. And so I know Andrew to be a, um, professional and very well-trained public safety officer and he's got one of the kindest hearts that I know, so congratulations, Andrew. After eight months of power and equipment challenges, I'm happy to tell you that Nawab British Indian Cuisine is now open again. DDA Director McGinnis and I attended the reopening last week and the food is as good as ever. So if you're feeling like, oh, I haven't been there in a while, well, go now. And if you've never tried it, this is, you know, they're, they're open again, so, so why wait? And as we wind down Berkeley Cares Month, I, I just was going to shine a light on you, uh, council member Patterson and your students and the efforts that you went to to fill those shelves at the, um, at the food pantry and the fact that, you know, you, you not only got all that food, but then you guys put it all away is another, um, another, I think it just reflects who you are. And so I want to thank you for your efforts and for setting the bar so high on involvement and engagement and setting a, a really fine example for your students as well. You're welcome. Comment one, I have to, uh, comment on comment one. I want to acknowledge the creative thinking of Berkeley Dads Club President Dave Schmidt, the Berkeley Dads Club, and, um, along with interim city manager Gynzer for bringing a proposal to council that we could support. I mean, it was truly, um, an effort. I watched it all unfold and, um, things were tweaked and ideas came together and so I'm, I'm very grateful. Um, and it's an example of collaboration between municipal government, a very active between municipal government, a very active and engaged community group, and the school district. And so I just, you know, working together sets the example for everyone to see that we're absolutely willing to think outside the box and we are open to new ideas. So if you have those ideas or a proposal for something, please don't hesitate because we are open. In the end, it all makes a difference. It's not, it's about our community and we are a community that cares. And with that, I would like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Black. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Henin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, October 21st, 2024 meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned.